Good evening and welcome to the January 28, 2014, Meeting of the Glendale City Council. It's been called ordered at 6:05 PM. May we have a roll call?
Councilmembers Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Montero.
Here.
Sananian.
Here.
Mayor Weaver.
Here. Let's salute tonight, but it will be led by Councilmember Najarian and invocation by City Clerk Ari Causacchio. Please, please.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for the invocation. 1963, during the commencement at American University, President John F. Kennedy made the following statement, quote, "And if we cannot end now our differences, at least we can help make the world safe for diversity, for in the final analysis, our most basic common link is that we all inhabit this planet, we all breathe the same air, we all cherish our children's future, and we are all mortal. Let us pray this evening that this basic common link remind us of our duties as officials governing the direction of our diverse and culturally rich city. We pray that we are blessed with the wisdom and foresight to make decisions that benefit our community as a whole and consider the legacy we bequeath future generations of our community. We pray for peace and prosperity to make all of this possible. Amen."
May we have your report?
Agenda for the January 28, 2014, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, January 23, 2014, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next, please.
Next item, under 3A, Presentation and Appointments, is the agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, February 4, 2014.
Thank you. Mrs. Beers.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the February 4, 2014 Housing Authority Meeting, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon, to commence at 3 PM, we do have a City Council and Glendale Housing Authority Meeting, one item, Director of Community Services and Parks. This is proposed grant application for the housing-related parks program. That afternoon also, we have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council, Director of Community Development. This is regarding zoning code language clarifications to the urban art program. That evening for the council meeting, to start at 6 PM, we have a number of consent items, Director of Library Arts and Culture, Library Literacy Services Program, GRUNT, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Water Conservation and Education Program for GWP residential customers, Fire Chief, Annual Weed Abatement Program for 2014, Director of Human Resources, this is an amendment of contract with CalPERS for local miscellaneous members represented by the Glendale City Employees Association, and this is to apply provisions of Section 2516, which is 3% to applicable members. Next, we have General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, California Proposition Additional Funding for Chrome 6 Research Studies. Under ordinances, we have one item, ordinance amending sections of Chapter 5.64 of the GMC, and this is related to massage owners' certificate and criminal background checks of the owners or operators who own 5% or more of the business. Under action items, we have Director of Community Services and Parks, Playground Installation Projects at Brand, Maryland Avenue, and Verdugo Parks, and this is a ward of contract for those areas. And lastly, we have City Attorney, and this is cancellation of the March 11, 2014 meetings, and this is due to a lack of quorum for that evening. And that concludes my report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor and Council, a 3B, Presentation of Employee Suggestion Awards Program Recipients, Robert Ashworth and Paul Baldaccino.
And Mr. Zern, am I going to you on this, or can Mr. Ochoa?
Go ahead.
You want to introduce?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it gives me great pleasure to introduce to you Mr. Robert Ashworth from Public Works Integrated Waste Management, Mr. Paul Baldaccino from GWP, and together these two innovators collaborated to come up with a device to assist us in the collection of recyclable containers from multifamily dwellings. Just let me point out what a great effort Public Works and Water and Power, working together to make this happen. I love it. Do you love it? I do. But previously, this was a task that was just pure muscle. We used to take a pickup truck and go down into primarily subterranean parking lots. Here's a picture of the truck after it gets finished with a tour of duty, and it just sheer manpower and muscle to get those up into the truck, bring them up, and empty them. So Bob, who came up with an idea of a device, and Paul, who fabricated it, and this is retrofitted on an existing piece of equipment that would have been surplus, otherwise surplus, and we put it on there, extended the life of the equipment, and are able to effectively get those containers out with little or no muscle.
It's a pattern.
If there is, we will.
Good.
belongs to us, Bob.
So you just put it on worldwide TV.
This device has allowed us to utilize surplus equipment and eliminate one truck from our fleet, and also it takes two individuals to do this, or three, it took us three previously. And probably most importantly, just the sheer wear and tear on our staff, the back injuries from trying to muscle those containers, this has saved us a great deal, will save us a great deal in that kind of pain and suffering. But overall, this is about a $73,000 a year savings to the Integrated Waste Management section, and we're very proud of both of these gentlemen. I have certificates for them. Would you like to say anything, John? Bob, would you like to?
You have actually covered everything.
Are you giving them anything besides a certificate?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Going to give them anything besides a certificate?
They did receive a cash award as well, which they've already received and maybe already spent, I don't know. This is the more formal part of it where we give them their recognition. Paul, there's your certificate. Thank you. Nice job. Come on up here, Paul. You've got to come with me. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity that you guys provide for us to do this and to come up with an idea and be recognized for it.
You got any more bright ideas between you?
We'll figure something out.
Glad I could help.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much.
At 3C is the presentation of the 2013 GMA Exceptional Manager of the Year Award recipients, Oni Bolanikian, Timothy Foy, and Jose Resendez.
Okay, the three of you, would you come up? Y'all got the same certificate wording, so I'm only going to read it once, okay, guys? It says, "Congratulations on being honored by the Glendale Management Association as Exceptional Manager of the Year. This prestigious award exemplifies your outstanding work, leadership, and extraordinary community engagement. On behalf of the City Council, thank you for representing the city of Glendale and serving as a shining example." With that, Frank, you want to handle that one? Now that one? One of you two want to handle it?
I'll go with it.
Some guy, sometime I got to find out what you did that was so exceptional. Okay, since we got you up here, say something. Oh, you got to speak for him?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Weaver, members of council. I do appreciate the time you've allowed us to come and recognize a couple of our colleagues from the GMA as the Exceptional Managers of the Year Award. This past year, the GMA instituted the Exceptional Manager of the Year Award to identify and select from our membership individuals who truly are outstanding. And if you ask me, I'm going to tell you that all the members of GMA, all the managers are exceptional, they should receive the award, because these men and women are hardworking. Women have taken on a number of additional challenges, duties, responsibilities, have used ingenuity in trying to accomplish vision and the goal set by this council, and as you know, over the past few years have contributed with some concessions to help the city through some difficult times. With that said, I'm truly proud to be standing here and representing these individuals as their president this year. The process was instituted towards the end of the year. We identified some members from the GMA that served on the nomination and selection committee. The concept was to have members nominate and select the awardees. And with that, I truly want to appreciate the committee members, Mr. Hago Casabian from Public Works Engineering, Anita Shandy Fire, Annette Vartanias, Library Arts and Culture, Walter Callis from IS, and Otina Arutinian, GWP. Their work in putting this program together was exceptional, we truly appreciate it, and we look forward to renewing this on an annual basis. The award recipients also accepted a $250 check from the GMA, and we did mention they should spend it in Glendale. And today is the opportunity for us to, you know, award them with a commemorative plaque for their desks. With that, I will be, I have the honor of representing the first individual, Mr. Oni Bolanikian. Oni started his career with the city in August of 2003 as a coordinator in the Community Services Section. He soon later promoted to supervisor in 2004, September, and both of these positions he served at the Pacific Community Center. Since his obsession, I guess Oni has been at the Pacific Community Center. And later on, in 2001, he was promoted to Community Services Manager and had the responsibility of the four community centers to manage Maple, Adult Recreation Centers, Spar Heights, as well as Pacific Community Center. Now, given the retirements and reductions in staffing we've experienced at the Parks Department, we had a restructuring, and with the restructuring, Oni ended up managing or taking on the responsibility of all three sections of our Recreation and Community Services Section of the department, including the community centers, recreation programs and facilities, as well as the customer service and special events. Mind you, these jobs were conducted by three managers and administrators in the past. Oni stepped up to the plate and took on the challenge and has done an exceptional job of delivering the service to the community even with the reductions we have faced. And with that, we'd like to recognize Oni for his service and for his service to Glendale. The Glendale Management Association is proud to recognize Mr. Oni Bolanikian as an Exceptional Manager of the Year.
I'm Laura Stotler, GMA Board Member, and I'm proud to be able to introduce Tim Foy. Tim started with the city in 2003, following several promotions. He currently serves as Deputy Director of Planning and Neighborhood Services. With the recent reorganization, Tim has tripled the number of staff he supervises. He's now in charge of not only planning, but he's also in charge of neighborhood services and currently supervises 35 staff. Tim's positive attitude, sense of humor, and straightforward problem-solving skills have helped him lead community development staff in providing good customer service at all levels. For his service to Glendale, the Glendale Management Association is proud to recognize Tim Foy as an Exceptional Manager of the Year.
This is Joe Resendez, and Joe started here with the city 34 years ago. And Joe's worked his way up from mechanical maintenance as an equipment service worker all the way to equipment supervisor, and Joe comes to work every day with a smile on his face, always a positive attitude. I'm so very proud of Joe. There have been many a times when we've heard Joe say, "Thank God for the city of Glendale. It's supported his family and everything he's done for the last 34 years," and he's very, very proud of that. Joe has a terrific work ethic, he's a great leader, and a great friend to everybody that knows him. For his exceptional service to the city of Glendale, the Glendale Management Association is proud to recognize Joe Resendez as an Exceptional Manager of the Year.
Thank you all for coming tonight. Congratulations.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
I just want to say that any organization, including a city organization, is only as effective and only as good as its employees, and we're an exceptional organization and an exceptional city because we have such dedicated and creative and exceptional employees. And the public was able to see five of them here tonight, plus some of their cohorts. And I want to congratulate the three award winners and also the two employees who invented the trash receptacle pickup, which is pretty amazing. We really have a great staff here, and I'm, as a citizen of Glendale, I'm very grateful to all of you, so congratulations.
Thank you very much, all. Keep up the good work. Maybe be an exceptional employee again someday. Next, please.
3D is Mayor's Commendation to the Glendale Association of Realtors for their annual Can Tree event.
Thank you. And who do I go to? Are you all coming up? I'll read the. Sure. Nation first. Glendale Association of Realtors. On behalf of the city of Glendale and the City Council, I would like to express my sincere appreciation for your generous efforts and contribution to local charities through the annual Can Tree event. Your diligence and adherence to this worthy cause is exemplary. This year, your efforts and those of your benevolent contributors will help benefit the Glendale Salvation Army, Glendale Police Department's STAR program, and Essentia. We wish you continued success in the years to follow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'll do this.
I think Rick Barnes will be accepting that as president of our association from you. This is totally unexpected, we appreciate it tremendously. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Greg Astorian. We are here tonight on behalf of Glendale Association of Realtors. With me is Rick Barnes, the president of our association, Silva Hameline, say hello, Silva. Silva Hameline, the president-elect of our association. Ira Bland is our immediate past president. Jiro Habeshian, standing right behind me, is the chair of the Public Relations Committee, and of course Lisa Jensen, along, standing next to Jiro, was the co-chair of the Can Tree Charity Event for 2013. Every year, our association organizes several charitable events, proceeds of which would help, really helps different causes that our realtors, their partners, and our sponsor businesses are passionate about. One of these events, perhaps the largest one, is the Can Tree, Can Tree Event. And Can Tree had a very modest beginning. I mean, the word "can tree," long time ago, we used to collect, realtors would go out and collect canned food and donate them to Salvation Army, and that's how it became Can Tree Event. Usually, Can Tree is held in November. Last November, it was held at Brand View Ballroom. We had 400 realtors and their guests, and approximately 400 realtors, their guests, and community members that attended, it was well-attended. We had a great live auction, silent auction, I think Mr. Ochoa was there for a few minutes, and Mr. Hagani showed up for a few minutes there as well. And I'm glad to report that we raised thousands of dollars, Mr. Mayor, for the following three charities. The Essentia, which deals with the plight of homelessness, which is a cause very near and dear to us, along with the STAR program, Glendale Foundation, Police Foundation program, mentoring youth. And of course, you can hear Lieutenant Sneed's little one asking for, asking for attention to Salvation Army. So that's how we also, this, in fact, this program started with Salvation Army. Yes, I know, absolutely. And so before I have my colleagues present the checks to their respective charities, I would like to take a minute and thank our business sponsors, which is very, very important because without them, this event would not have been the success that it was. On the platinum level, on the highest level, Safari and Baroyan LLP, this is a law firm in the city of Glendale that just moved in the city of Glendale. Southern California Gas Company also was one of our platinum sponsors. New Pipe Plumbing was one of our platinum sponsors. Prudential California was one of our platinum sponsors. Kowonis Group, an organization very near and dear to my heart, was a sponsor, and of course, Bank of America Home Loans. On the next highest level.
Wait, wait, wait.
Greg Astorian was also a platinum sponsor.
You can't read, eh?
Especially my name.
Yeah, you skipped over it, we noticed.
On the gold level, Mr. Mayor, Dilbek Realtors was one of our sponsors, Broadmoor Financial, Crescenta Valley Weekly, Inner Valley Escrow, LVA Glendale, Skyline Home Loans, Bank of Manhattan, Amity Group, and of course Hollywood Production. On the silver level, CVRE, Rafi Budgurgi on Law Offices, Prudential California Gladiators, Diana Walker, and Team Eric Rustigian. And on bronze level, Prospect Mortgage, along with, and I believe now, I can't read this one. Advance Group, and of course, the team of Armin Avidian and his partners from Prudential. Now, I will ask for Ira Bland to hand a check to Dorothy Gerbalski and as well as Officer Alex that represent the Glendale Foundation's STAR program, and that check would be in the sum of $5,881. The next check will be handed to Essentia by Silva Hameline, and this check, I believe, would be for the sum of $5,658. And of course, the granddaddy of all of them all is the check that is going to present to Salvation Army to Lieutenant Sneed, by Rick Barnes, and that check, actually, there are several checks, that are in the sum of $28,950. Mayor Weaver, that concludes our presentation. We appreciate taking time and listening to our positive news, and we are really looking forward to seeing you, all of you, next year in this event. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Thank you all. Okay, what is next, please?
Next is item number four, City Council on Staff Comments.
Any? Oh, Ms. Friedman.
Last week, I had the opportunity to travel to Sacramento for a few hours to meet with the Speaker of the House, Speaker Perez, about issues important to Glendale and other cities in the region, and one of the things that I spoke to him about, which I think is really of utmost importance to the residents of our city, is the spike in crime, primarily residential burglaries, which we attribute to the side effects of so-called realignment, shifting the burden of prisons from the state to the local governments, and the fact that because our prisons are overcrowded, the so-called nonviolent offenders, based on last offense only, have been released from prison. And we're finding that when we recatch these people committing crimes, they're not doing jail time, they're coming right back into the streets to commit more crimes. I think this is a huge problem across Southern California. We've seen it here in Glendale, we've seen the effects. It's something that we have asked for relief from the state, telling them that this is not working in its present form. I don't know whether we had a receptive audience or not, but I promise to keep pounding on this issue at whatever level I need to, to make sure that we get some relief and that when people commit crimes, they do some time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? You?
I, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sananian.
I spoke about this at the housing session, our session of Glendale Housing Authority, and just want to make sure that our residents, those of our residents who were working or otherwise unable to watch the Housing Authority session, are aware that the city of Glendale has organized affordable housing forums, one of which took place yesterday, and there will be another one on Thursday at 6 PM at the Pacific Edison Community Center, and another one, yet another one, on Monday, February 3, also at 6 PM at the Adult Recreation Center. And the idea is to get as many people who are concerned with the issue together and make sure that people have the answers, people have the information, because otherwise, there are a lot of questions out there, and the city obviously wants to make sure that no one's left in the dark. There's plenty of information for everyone because it's a very sensitive issue, and if the last meeting was any indication, there is a serious issue of affordable housing in the city of Glendale, and within our means, we're trying to find solutions to those issues, and we'll continue doing so in the future. So Thursday, 6 PM, Edison Community Center, Pacific Edison Community Center, and Monday, also 6 PM, at the ARC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other comments? Okay, if not, what is next, please?
Next is the consent items, item number five, following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such request before a motion is proposed.
Motion to pull 5B.
5C, please.
M5C. Is there a motion on the remainder of the consent calendar?
I will move the remainder of the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Please read 5B.
5B is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding AMI-Based Conservation Voltage Reduction Pilot Program for GWP. Motion on authorizing execution of a professional services agreement with Dominion Voltage, Inc. in the amount of $180,000, approving contingency of $18,000. At B2 is a motion authorizing a software license and support services agreement with Dominion Voltage, Inc. in the amount of $30,000, with an option to purchase up to two additional months of $9,500 a month for a total cost not to exceed $49,000.
Thank you. I have one card, Mike MoHill, two minutes.
My name is Mike MoHill. In respect to those who come before this, before this council who want to speak, in the past, we had three minutes to speak on any consent or agenda item. Now we're being told it's two minutes, maybe it's one minute. I think the public is due their respect to know in advance, before they come here, that they're going to be allowed either three minutes, two minutes, or one, whatever the mayor decides, but he is the mayor. So Mayor Weaver.
We're using your time right now.
I'd like to know, what will it be in the future? Can we count, the public would like to know what we can count on. If there's a lot of people in the audience to speak on a subject matter.
Clock is running.
We, I understand, we can decide on what we want to talk on, but you don't give us any chance to know what, how much time we can speak on a given subject matter. Is that fair, Mr. Weaver?
Clock is running.
I'm asking a simple question.
I'm not having a discussion with you. You want to speak on this item.
Right, but I'd like to know how much time I have.
I'm not speaking to that. You're two minutes away.
So it seems to me that you, whatever you want at the moment is how much time we, the public has to speak.
It's not appropriate, it's not appropriate discussion. You wanted this item pulled, address this item.
Thank you.
Well, 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 he didn't want to talk about it after all. Is there a motion on 5B?
I have a question. You can guess what I'm going to ask.
Yes, yes.
So why are we?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Sananian, this is actually a pilot program. This is, this is furthering our modernization efforts and beyond just the installation of automated meters, now we're getting into some of the things that are going to be more tangible to customers and provide a direct benefit. In this particular case, the pilot program is looking at voltage regulation. By law, we have to deliver electricity to our customers between a certain parameter of voltage. Generally, we'll err to the conservative side and be on the higher end of it, but a household doesn't always need that, that level of voltage. This system will regulate that and actually allows you to deliver more to the lower end of the spectrum, the required spectrum, and it can reduce or promote conservation by up to 10%, is some of the data that's come back. This particular firm is the one we went with because they are AMI certified, that's the meters we have. This is the only firm that has a voltage regulation program that is for our meters, for the brand of meters.
The software itself is patented.
Correct.
I'm satisfied with that. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion on 5B?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Caro.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Please read 5C.
5C is Director of Public Works Regarding SR 134 Glendale Avenue Interchange Modification Project. C1 is Resolution Appropriating $1,400,000 of Measure R Funds for the project.
Thank you, Mr. Caro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I ask this to be pulled and will ask Mr. Zern to tell us about the great new improvements that are going to be done to the Glendale Avenue 134. the great new improvements that are going to be done to the Glendale Avenue 134 interchange area.
And the traffic delays that will incur while you're doing the work.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Najarian, yeah, this is a long, long awaited project that we've been, we have had in the planning stages probably the greater part of my career here. And the idea was to improve that intersection at Glendale Avenue Monterey and the 134 freeway to allow for more efficient ingress and egress from the freeway to the freeway. And as you all know from experience, it gets pretty clogged there, especially during peak period times. So in this particular case, we're going to make improvements on Monterey and the intersection as a whole. We're going to peel back some of the median that's there to allow for, for extra turn lanes. We're going to upgrade the signalization. We'll widen the intersection, all in an effort to try to improve flow through there and as I said, ingress and egress to the freeway. This is an interesting project in that, and I'm not sure if even all of you were on council at the time, but we did a swap with Caltrans to build a sound wall for DreamWorks. And the swap was, they didn't have any, or they were not funding sound walls at the time. So we funded the sound wall with the agreement that they would come back and provide us with road money for improvements. Well, as you can imagine, that went puff and was a zero shortly thereafter. So we've been working diligently to try to get this project done. And thank goodness for Measure R monies which came about. And this is the regional funds that allow us to make improvements to our roadway system within a certain distance from freeways, a mile within freeways. So we're able to finally get this project done. And yes, Mr. Weaver, we will have some, there's congestion without construction. We'll have some challenges there. But when we're done, we expect that there'll be a great improvement to that particular intersection.
I think that's the most heavily traveled street in Glendale.
Correct.
Will we tailor it so that at the rush hours, if there are any hours that can be identified as rush hour, to not have construction during those periods like peak morning, peak afternoon?
Yeah, I think that Mr. Galanian and his staff are working, working hard to try to figure that out, especially coming in and off the freeway. And you're absolutely right, the cars per hour on that particular stretch of the Glendale Avenue are the highest, the highest during the week and peaks and the weekends. So it doesn't subside.
I know.
When we go off the normal work schedules. So Rubik has his hands full, but he has a number of plans in place to try to keep that flowing as best we can.
Excuse me, I just have one more question, Mr. Montero. The map here and what you said in here, you talk about Coronado and Monterey, which is beyond the heavy black line. Is there a reason or is it just the black line didn't go far enough? You're talking about item seven, construction of biofilter in the realigned areas of Coronado at Monterey.
Right. You may recall that many years ago, we put in some traffic calming measures on Polo and Cordova. So those will be reconfigured and will be.
Okay, so there's work beyond.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, what the map indicates is actually terminates at the intersection of Cordova and Monterey.
Right.
And that's the terminus of our project. We have some work to do at the intersection, but not beyond.
So what's at Coronado and Monterey then? Or Coronado at Monterey?
There is a median that will be.
Oh, so there is some work beyond.
Actually.
The line goes right up to you.
He said Cordova.
Goes to Cordova.
Yes, Cordova.
We don't go beyond, we might have a typo in the, in the staff report.
It says project location and it doesn't, so I'm just wondering if I'm reading it wrong.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have previously realigned Coronado. So now we'll just install a biofilter.
Okay. You have to, thank you, Mr. Galanian. Sorry about that. I just, a question of curiosity. Mr. Caro.
So, yeah, looking at the map, it's kind of spare. So it's basically north, south on Glendale Avenue to Monterey and then on to Cordova.
Yes, Mr. Sananian.
So I'm looking at alternative two and I'm just thinking out the options that we have on the table. So I'm clear, the total value of the project is $1.4 million, right?
Yes, Mr. Sananian.
And that, and that comes from the, from the Measure R regional funds.
Correct.
If we, let's say reject this, it says that we cancel the funding for the project and allocate 1.4 millions for something else. So we're canceling the project with the, with the Metro, but that same amount of money can be allocated to another program. Is that correct?
Correct. We have a certain allocation of funds.
The 1.7.
And we've submitted, it's actually a 30-year funding cycle with Metro on these regional funds. And we have submitted our first phase of projects, which includes this one. We've had several others. We've been before you with a, with a few of those. And, and so if for any reason the council decided they didn't want to pursue this project, those funds would then be reprogrammed into another project that was eligible. And we'd go back through Metro, get their approval, and then come back to you.
Which leads me to my next question. And the reason we're doing this program, this project right now is because it's the most urgent. We found it to be the most time sensitive, the one that needs funding the most at this time.
In our overall priority list, this is where it fell. I think we've probably done three or four Measure R, large Measure R projects to date.
Yes.
So this fell about there. As I said, it's been an ongoing program that we've just had on the shelf. But as, as Mr. Galanian and his staff get to a larger project on Glendale Avenue, this allows us to, to get a complete Glendale Avenue project. And because this is, within that proximity of the freeway that makes the funds eligible, that one mile, we're going ahead and doing this part with the Measure R and then looking at our larger Glendale project, which I believe you'll see next week for, for going out to bid.
And the balance of, I guess, $300,000 of Measure R money, do we have plans for that specific?
We'll put it back into the, into the programming list. I don't, I don't know if you have specific for that 300, but it goes back into our, our pot of funds and we reprogram it into another project.
Okay, thank you.
We don't lose it. So.
Good. Thank you.
And the drivers will appreciate the improvements.
When we're done. Bear with us.
Not before.
As we do it, they'll.
How many, how many months did you say? I forgot, I read it, but I forgot. Three, four months? Sorry, Mr. Galanian.
Mayor, members of the city council, this will probably be a five to six month project.
Six months. Starting approximately.
We're still in design and we're still in the process of finalizing the property acquisition. So it'll probably be next year.
Next year?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is the measure or the item to nail down the funding that's required.
Nail down the design, get construction drawings ready. You'll be back to us again.
Yes.
Okay, is there?
Move the item?
No, second. Roll call.
Council members Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
This is on the agenda. The next item is oral communications. However, this will be the portion reserved for three-minute community event announcements. We will revisit the full five-minute portion at the.
Okay, this is for announcements. And this is three minutes, Mr. Mohill, followed by Carmen Libriderian.
Does this count against his five minutes?
Put it on.
Can we talk for five minutes?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you, Mayor Weaver and council members. I would like to announce tonight that Glendale residents have an opportunity to repeal the 7% utilities users tax, which is located in one, on one's GWP utility bill and natural gas bill. Today, a petition is circulating throughout the city in which the public has a chance to regain control of their local government from the politicians. Enough is enough in taxes and in fees. While struggling families and businesses are coping with today's economy, our politicians lack fiscal responsibility. From 2001 through 2012, Glendale population actually declined by 4.5%. During the same period, the city's budget increased by a staggering 62%, rising from $438 million to over $700 million.
Is this a community event?
Even with this unprecedented increase in the city's budget, the city council is currently proposing further increases in the city's utility taxes.
Stop, stop the clock.
As well as other taxes.
Please stop the clock. It's been asked of me, is this proper announcement? Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you recall, at some point in the past, we established dividing the oral communications into two, one for generally for community announcements to attend to community events, to, or to announce upcoming community events. To extent that he was announcing that there are petitions out, I think it falls within. However, it does seem like there's a little bit of argument there. So it's really, it's really within your discretion.
Well, you've announced that there's a petition out there because we have not done a good job. I think that summarizes your statement.
No, there's more to this, Mr. Weaver.
As an announcement?
An announcement. I want to announce to the public why we have this.
Announce it then.
Because our city leaders are either unable and unwilling to control spending and manage resources, the people must take direct action to ensure that they do so.
When and where?
Reducing city revenues will force our leaders.
Stop the clock again.
I have three minutes, Mr. Mayor.
It's been stopped. I'm giving you three minutes, but stay on topic. What is the announcement? You're doing a petition drive. Now, you want to tell people where they can go to get the petition?
I will get the.
No, no, you say it now. You say it now or I'm stopping you because you're not doing what?
You're not being fair to the speaker. I'm trying to give you respect.
Sir, it's an announcement period. Announcement, not a lecture to the council. Now, do you want to give a location or are you done?
And I would just add, I would just add, Mr. Mayor, that obviously Mr. Mohill is free to come during the general oral communications and.
He's free?
Keep the general, the general discussion that he's engaging in now and make that, make that discussion at that point.
Let's invite him back at the five minutes section. I think he'll be more comfortable doing so.
Okay, I'll come back at the five minutes section and complete my speech.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carmen Libriderian. You also get three minutes to announce.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver and city council. My name is Carmen Libriderian and I represent the Armenian Relief Society based here in Glendale, California. It's that time of the year again where we are having our third annual winter wonderland where the ARS brings snow to Glendale, the children of Glendale. This year, we're having talent shows, fashion shows, great rides, great food, and most importantly, tons and tons and tons of snow. We have a DVD, a clip that we'd like to show you and that will explain what fun we have.
Okay.
Come and enjoy the ARS Winter Wonderland's two-day festival taking place February 1st and 2nd on the grounds of St. Mary's Church located at 500 South Central Avenue in Glendale. A chance to play with real snow, rides, games, and talent shows. Apply at ARSWESTUSA.org or call 818-500-1343. Great food and entertainment. Admission is $3 and it's free for ages 10 and under. Come and have a great time. See you there.
We are grateful to be sponsored by, our major sponsors Forest Lawn here in Glendale, as well as Memorial Hospital and Adventist Hospitals. Also, if you're not watching the Super Bowl, we'd like to have you there on Sunday. But if your husbands are watching, take the kids and come and have a good time. I'd like to also thank you for, for giving us this time to communicate with our community. Thank you so much.
If you're coming, it was a clear announcement. You showed location, date, features of it. Thank you. Good announcement.
500 South Central. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I have no more cards. What's next, please?
Next, under adoption of ordinances, 7A is ordinance amending development impact fees. This was introduced on January 21st, 2013 by Councilmember Najarian. 7A1 is a resolution amending the amount and timing of the collection of development impact fees.
I'll move 7A1.
Mr. Weaver?
Do you?
I'm sorry. 7A is a separate item from 7A1. So 7A is the ordinance.
I'll move the ordinance at 7A.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
Hi. Next, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Montero.
Yes.
Sananian.
Yes.
Mayor Weaver.
All right. Next, please.
I'm sorry, there was a card. I had to drop something off in your office. Please reset me.
To the vote.
You should still have the card.
Excuse me?
You should, you should still let Mr. Mohill.
Still do, okay. Mr. Mohill, two minutes on 7A8, which was discussed at length last week.
Good evening, council members and Mayor Weaver. I was not surprised when I read that Councilman Ari Najarian tonight was calling for increasing the impact fees the council charges developers from the current $7,000 per residential unit to doubling that fee. Why? Because the city needs the money to offset the impact of nearly 4,000 new apartment dwellers who will be using our parks, libraries, and other city services. After the 2007 election, I started coming to council regularly and saw council bending over backwards to the developers with time extension for their projects because the city needed the property tax revenue. What I, what I did not know at the time was the impact fees were set so low to encourage new development. In March 2013, Councilman Najarian at a council candidate forum stated he wanted to put the brakes on any new development. About 2,000 new apartments had been approved by Mr. Najarian and council members. After the animals were let out of the barn, Mr. Najarian became this great visionary of smart growth. Since 2007, there only were impact fees to developers set low, but council gave away the house when they did, when they allowed developers to save thousands of dollars, thousands of dollars, when they did not have to provide sufficient parking for their tenants. Instead, some tenants would be able to use public parking lots at taxpayers' expense and nearby streets for guest parking. Over the next five to six years, we will have approximately 21 new apartment complexes with no award-winning designs, which the beautiful city of Pasadena consistently embraces. We can look forward to about 4,000 new apartment dwellers living the good life in Glendale. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I just address that, even though this item has been.
Yes.
With, I just need to.
Well, he didn't address the item. He addressed what you did.
Just to be clear and for the record, Mr. Mohill is completely mistaken on my position on the new buildings that have gone up. I think it's readily verifiable by looking at any of the archived meetings that I have been a strong opponent of such development.
Thank you. Okay, now we're back on track. Okay, 8A.
It is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Periodic Maintenance and Repair Services of Hariba Emissions Analysts at Grayson Power Plant, submitted on January 9th. 8A1 is a resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorizing execution of a three-year service contract with Hariba Instruments in an amount not to exceed $132,000.
Okay, just clarification, Mr. Zavas. You marked agenda item with a check mark. Do you mean oral communications? Thank you, Mr..
Similar to what you saw last year, sir, or last year's last meeting, the equipment at the Grayson is old and aging and the replacement and repair is such that the vendors are very limited. So we are asking for your permission to dispense with competitive bidding and go straight to the provider of this equipment, Hariba Instruments, rather than go to a bid and buy it from somebody that would buy it from Hariba. At this point, these are emission analyzers that go at the plant. If you have any specific technical questions, I believe Mr. Lenz is here to address those.
Any questions?
I do have a question. So I heard what you said, we're buying from Hariba because this is a Hariba product and therefore whoever we bought it from other than Hariba would have to buy this product from Hariba. But that doesn't automatically mean that there's a guarantee that Hariba sold it to us cheaper, does it? I mean, there are plenty of instances where an entity will sell to wholesale buyer at a different price than it will sell to another buyer. So I just want to know, what, what information do we have that assures us that going directly to Hariba automatically means that we're getting it cheaper?
Well, Mr. Sananian, our experience, based on what Steve and his staff have gone back and looked at, it's around 15% markup on parts. So if somebody buys a part and brings it in, it is generally right around that 15% markup range. Plus, we have Hariba who's not, not only providing.
Plus, we have Hariba who's not only providing the parts, but the maintenance as well, and they are the manufacturer. It's very rare that you have the opportunity to have the manufacturer themselves come in to do the repairs. Usually, the manufacturers will be based somewhere else in the United States. They happen to be based in Irvine, so that gives us an advantage there, too. So we think both the experience of their maintenance staff, along with the savings on the parts by cutting out essentially a middleman, is in our best interest for this what is about $2.4 million of equipment that we've installed over the last 10 or 12 years.
Have we in the past gone to Hariba? And, or have we in the past purchased a Hariba product where it actually went to an RFP and Hariba came in with the lowest price?
I believe the analyzers themselves, when they were installed, went through a competitive process. So from '92 to 2004, we replaced all 13 of the analyzers at the plant, and I believe all of those went through a competitive process. And Hariba was consistently the firm that came in.
And how much would an RFP cost?
How much would it cost us? Just the staff time to put it out, you know, and I don't have a specific number on that.
I think we should, I mean, we should put it out. If it costs us nothing, just put it out for an RFP, and Hariba comes in the lowest bidder and simple answer, it's done. Just, it's just the proper thing to do, I think. That's just, that's just my position.
Generally, I would support that, but I think the point is that you actually have the manufacturer who would be performing this maintenance.
Correct.
And I think that there's perhaps a different level of quality and expertise in the workmanship as opposed to an independent. It's like taking your car to an independent garage versus taking it to the dealer when there's repairs to be done. Not that it cannot be done properly, but I think you get a certain level of comfort that the manufacturer and its own trained employees would be performing this.
But I don't see how that conflicts with what I'm saying. Wouldn't we end up with the Hariba product anyway, and Hariba would be doing the servicing anyway, no matter who we got it from? Am I misunderstanding this?
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Sinanian. If the actual devices were not Hariba, would they-
No, no. From what I understand, we're going to end up with the Hariba product.
We have Hariba products. They're already in-
Right, so, so the maintenance, so we're saying that the maintenance would, it's guaranteed that it'd be performed cheaper by Hariba than someone else?
Well, we believe on the parts, definitely based on our, on historical data that we have from our maintenance, you know, on the labor, we haven't looked at that, but what our sense is right along the lines of what Mr. Najarian was saying is you've got the manufacturers. You don't have an authorized repair shop that, you know, you have folks that are trained through the manufacturer, and I think the level of service is a notch higher. That's our belief.
Okay. All right.
Any more questions? Is there a motion? 8B1.
Can I move the item?
Is there a second?
Second.
8A1. I'm sorry, whether it was hesitation. I'm sorry. Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
No.
Mayor Weaver?
All right, now, 8B.
8B is City Clerk regarding special municipal election, consolidating the election with the County of Los Angeles state primary election. U1 is a resolution calling and giving notice of the holding of a special municipal election to be held on June 3rd, 2014, and authorizing the City Clerk to carry out all necessary procedures for said election, working with the County of Los Angeles.
Mr. Chola.
I would defer to our esteemed City Clerk to walk you through this process, sir.
Esteemed.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is simply the resolution that the council must adopt for us to have an election in order to fill the seat that was originally vacated by Councilmember Manukian's election to treasurer and subsequently filled by the appointment of Councilmember Quintero. And as much as it may pain you to see Councilmember Quintero go, our charter dictates that we must do this. The report is fairly straightforward in outlining the points in our charter that require this, and I ask you humbly to adopt this resolution so we can ask the county to consolidate.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions. If we approve it tonight, when does, anybody that wants to run, when can they apply? 30 days from now or immediately?
I'm sorry?
Well, take out papers.
Finally, pull papers.
Pull papers.
Can they pull papers? I'm sorry, I had trouble hearing you. The date they can pull papers is February 10th?
February 10th. Okay.
They'll have until March 7th to submit them.
Until March 7th. Those are the two dates that I didn't see here.
When can they raise money? When can they begin raising money?
As soon as you vote in the affirmative to adopt this.
Tomorrow?
Correct.
Well, you have to have, there's a form, don't you, that says you're going to start raising money?
That is, that is up to, well, you can raise, as soon as you've raised your first $1,000, you have to file with the Secretary of State. You have to have a Form 410.
Form 410, yeah. Okay. One other question. The fiscal impact, it talks about one office, one measure, or one office, two measures. Do we have to do anything with that?
That was purely for clarification and information that was, that we looked into with the expectation that there would be possible items on the ballot. It could be anything as stated in the report, such as a charter amendment, or it could be your charter cleanup, is something that we've considered in conversations with City Manager and City Attorney, or possible revenue-raising measures.
Do we have any idea what deadline for council to act on any measure is?
By March 7th.
By March 7th, we would have to adopt. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Sinanian?
Yes, Mr. Min. Thank you. This may be a conversation for a different council session, but I'll ask you a question that'll make my comment. How much is this going to cost us, the city? What's our portion of?
It'll cost us whatever. It's 200, I believe, $30,000, as stated figure in the report. Every additional measure that we put on there will possibly be an additional $10,000 to $20,000.
And the reason we're forced to have these elections during the county election, because that's what our charter provides, right?
Yes.
I mean, I would ask my fellow council members whether this is something, this issue and the chaos, or, I don't want to call it chaos, but the irregularity that it creates and the money that, the extra money that's having to be spent on this issue. Maybe we can revisit or visit this issue and discuss whether a charter amendment, putting a charter amendment to our residents is something would be amenable to.
Well, I simply raised it because there is some talk about it possible. There may not be any.
No, no, I know. I'm talking about a specific issue. Specifically, how does the charter deal with a situation like the one that arose with the election of Rafi Manukian to treasurer's seat?
Council would decide to put the measure on.
That's what I'm calling for, a discussion of that.
Well, I think the City Attorney can advise even tonight that I believe that because this is a consolidated election, you can put charter amendments on the ballot. And if nothing else, to Mr. Sinanian's point, you may want to seriously consider adding charter cleanup that would allow you to mirror most general law cities, that when you have a vacancy and you make an appointment to fill that vacancy, that that appointment is good until the next general municipal election, as opposed to this interim measure where you'll have a council member serving for a little over a year and another serving for a little under a year.
Right, because it's, I think it's very messy and there's a lot of uncertainty associated-
So clarify again what you're saying?
Well, I think what we're talking about is if two or more of you would like to have a discussion about this before the March 7th deadline, we can bring back a report on whether or not to put forth a charter amendment to amend this charter provision, which was requiring us to have this discussion tonight.
Put it into the charter for, in the future, if there's any event like this again that is there?
Yeah.
That we have a more clean and neat-
And that would cost us another $250,000, right, to put that on the ballot?
No, that would have another, it'd be, the cost, the cost that Mr. Kasakian quoted is to have one, the one council seat, plus one, either a ballot measure for revenue measure or a charter amendment, is covered within that $235,000. Any additional measures are an additional $10,000.
To use poker parlance, the buy-in is $230,000. Anything-
No matter what you do, yeah.
Correct.
And then another 10 to 20 for anything else added in.
That's correct.
So we want to spend them, the $10,000 to $20,000 to make it a permanent change in the charter, which the voters would have to make that decision for us.
Yes.
It would likely be the most cost-effective method to add something to this election cycle.
Mr. Najarian?
So, that raises the question that if such a charter amendment is placed on the ballot, and it gives the council the authority to appoint until the next municipal election, would the results of the city council election become void?
Good question, but I don't think so, because you wouldn't have appointed somebody on the date of the election to name that council member.
Well, that's just a matter of language, appointing in advance and all that.
I don't, I don't, we could look at it, but I don't think so.
But let's bring it back. I just point this, let's bring it back.
Seconded?
I'd be happy to discuss the nuances of that, because we had that with the last one with the treasurer and should it be an elected position or not, rather than appointed, so. But I do have another question, Mr. Kasakian. So, in your experience on the single-event municipal elections of Glendale, how many voters do you usually see come to the polls? Like 25,000?
You'd have to be more clear on what you mean by single-event elections, Councilmember.
On our typical, when I say single-
On our typical municipal elections.
Right.
Because we do also consolidate with the community college board of trustees and with the school district. We have approximately 22,000, 25,000 voters who participate in that election, give or take. And again, that number reflects the areas outside of Glendale also where, for the jurisdictions which we conduct the elections.
And in these county elections, do we have a number on how many Glendale city residents vote in a typical county primary? I mean, this is a primary election in June.
To be completely honest with you, I do not have that figure, but I will say this, that in my experience and knowledge, it really varies on the particular election cycle. Obviously, in a contested presidential election year where you have a primary, that number would be higher than it would be in what is often referred to as the off-election years. It also depends on how contested particular upticket seats are versus lower-ticket seats. So it really varies. I can't give you an answer, and I would have to look and see what the last turnouts were and give you an answer based on that, but even that may not be accurate to predict what will happen in this next cycle.
Okay, I'm just thinking, because as candidates come forward and think, all they need is 8,000 votes out of 22,000, there may be a larger pool that-
The only certainty in campaigns is that there is no certainty.
That there is uncertainty, yeah. Mr. Quintero?
Mr. City Clerk, if the election is held June 3rd, when do I get to leave? The following week?
The next morning. You can head off to Spain.
Technically, it will be the following council meeting, the new elected council member will be seated, whoever he or she may be.
Very good.
And you can make a nice, you can pack your bags, be prepared to head for Spain.
It'll be packed prior to June 3rd.
So I have one more question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Najarian?
Do you think papers can be pulled February 10th for a June election? But in our regular municipal elections, it's only about 90 days ahead from January to-
This is different.
This will be a slightly longer campaign season.
Do we want that?
And it will probably feel longer to some people.
Can we shorten that?
County.
No, because-
Unfortunately, we cannot.
Yeah, because papers have to be turned in by March 7th in order to be able to consolidate with the county.
Oh, that's true.
So, can we, someone second my proposal that we have the city attorney-
Yes, sir.
And perhaps have the city attorney come back with some proposals as to how to, you know, what would be-
That particular section, we can do that. We were already thinking about it, too.
A discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Okay, is there a motion on this?
I'll move the item.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let the campaigning begin.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Montero?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
All right.
Thank you.
And next, 8C.
8C is City Attorney, Chief of Police, and Director of Community Development regarding proposed ordinance amending sections of Chapter 5.64 of the Glendale Municipal Code related to massage owner certificate and criminal background check for massage owners or operators who own 5% or more of a massage business or establishment and who are not CAMTC certified. C1 is ordinance for introduction. C2 is a resolution amending the city's fiscal year 2013-14 adopted citywide fee schedule, adding a fee for a massage owner certificate, non-CAMTC certified. C3 is a resolution amending the city's fiscal year 2013-14 adopted citywide fee schedule, adding and amending administrative citation fees. And C4 is a motion providing direction, providing direction to staff to initiate a zoning code amendment to regulate window transparency for massage establishments and personal services businesses. And I will defer to the City Manager for a note on Items 2 and 3.
Okay, I'm going to get ready. Remember, it's somebody to introduce the ordinance when we get to that point, and then the others we move secondly. And Mr. Chola?
Yes, sir. This is actually an item that has emanated from this dais. Mr. Sinanian had taken a great interest and voiced some of the concern that council members had had with the proliferation of any number of massage and day spa-related businesses. And specifically, just wanting to make sure that as local control had been adjusted under the state law, that there were still ways to have a level playing field, to respect what the law was intending to do, and make sure that all of the business practices were reflective of everything that all parties, all legitimate parties, wanted to see enacted in our community. So, with that, we have assembled a broad spectrum of interests and viewpoints and presented or constructed a proposed ordinance for your consideration. Our Senior Assistant City Attorney, Mike Grant, will facilitate the presentation, and certainly afterwards, we will take whatever questions the council might have. Mike?
Summary will be that we're going to go beyond what state law requires.
I'm sorry?
That we'll be going beyond what state law requires.
We will be, I wouldn't say going beyond what state law requires, we'll be supplementing what the state law provides for.
Yeah, we'll be within the state law, what permits us to do what we're going to be proposing in this ordinance. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Weaver and Councilmembers. Before you, for your consideration, is an ordinance, proposed ordinance, that will regulate massage establishments and massage businesses, which the City Manager described. It's a very narrow category. It is those owners who own 5% or more of their business and which are not certified by the California Massage Therapy Council. That is an organization, a nonprofit created by the state legislature back in 2009. A little history about the state law, I think, will assist in understanding where we are today with this ordinance. Until 2009, cities and counties pretty much had absolute authority in regulating massage establishments and massage therapists, and cities and counties generally did so through a permit process, which was a very effective tool in regulating massage businesses which either violated the law or had crimes committed on the premises. But in 2009, the state legislature responded to massage therapists, oops, sorry, request by enacting legislation that would allow massage therapists to pretty much freely practice anywhere within the state without having to go through a permit process through cities and counties. The legislation was known as SB 731, and it created the California Massage Therapy Council, and also created a certification process for individuals who wanted to practice massage throughout the state. Under SB 731, there are several requirements in order to get certification. They can be cert, an individual can be certified either as a massage practitioner, which requires approximately 250 hours of training and education, or a massage therapist, which is 500 hours. And applicants go through a criminal background check. They also give information about their background. One of the key provisions of SB 731 is that a massage therapist or a massage practitioner can give massage in any city without the need of having to get a permit. So pretty much in 2009, when, it was enacted in 2008, it became effective in September of 2009. of 2009. Administratively, we followed the law, we no longer issued permits, and eventually we did adopt an ordinance in 2011, putting it all together, where massage therapists and practitioners who are certified by the CMTC have to show their registration to the city, and they register and re-register every two years. Another feature of SB 731 is that we have to treat massage businesses the same as other businesses in the city that offer professional services. And it's actually a key point, because as we say in the slide there, that we have to apply the same zoning requirements to massage therapists, businesses, as we do, for example, lawyers, doctors, dentists, accountants. So that means that, for example, in just, in certain requirements, a massage establishment, if we ask them to provide an extra sink or shower, we would have to do the same for doctor's office, dentist's office. We can't limit massage businesses in certain locations unless we limit, you know, doctor's office and dentist's offices as well. In 2011, the council adopted ordinance 5751, which essentially really did two things. We required people who want to give massages here in the city of Glendale to be CMTC certified, and also that massage establishments hire only CMTC certified individuals. Under, under Chapter 5.64, essentially, what the person does is they come in, they show the certificate, and then we give them a registration certificate, and they're required to do this every two years, which essentially corresponds to their CMTC certificate. The proposed ordinance, again, focuses on a group of massage establishment owners. The state law says that cities and counties can regulate owners who own 5% or more of their business and who are not certified by the CMTC. And generally, and here in Glendale, we may have some that are certified, but, and actually own the business, but this ordinance is only going to apply to those who don't have certification from the CMTC. And what we'll be really doing is essentially turning back the clock for this group of people. We will be doing sort of a, essentially similar to a permit registration, but, you know, they will be applying instead for a massage establishment owner certificate. And this will give us the ability to run a background check on them, gain, ask them to provide information about their background. They have to submit fingerprints, we'll run a criminal background check. And also, they will, as part of this investigation application process, pay a $521 fee, which happens to be the same fee that for applicants for a special entertainment district permit. So it's no different from some of the other type of permits that are issued throughout the city. In addition, the proposed ordinance will have certain criteria that will allow the director of community development, or even the city manager, if it's on an appeal, to consider criteria for the initial application and for a renewal application. And generally, that is described in the ordinance under disqualifying conduct, and it lists a number of felonies, misdemeanors, and other offenses which would disqualify a business from receiving the certificate. In addition to the ability of the city to, you know, revoke a certificate after even it's issued, the proposed ordinance also refers to the administrative citations in Chapter, I think it's 1.24. And so that if there's a violation of this chapter or an offense is committed, in addition to revoking the permit, we can also impose the administrative citation fines, and they are consistent with the highest category of 400 for the first offense, $1,000, the second offense, and $2,000 for the third offense. Also before you today for your consideration is a motion to initiate a zoning code amendment for visibility, and actually, I'm going to ask Tim Foy to come up and discuss just a few aspects of that.
Thank you. This is just to initiate the zoning code amendment, there's no ordinance before you to adopt or to debate. This is just a call for staff to start the process of investigating what sort of standards we can put in that makes sense for not only massage establishments, but for also all the other types of businesses, which under state law, we must treat the same. So this is the list of the sort of things that we would be looking into. And with any zoning code amendment, we will take it first to the planning commission for the recommendation, and then back to the city council.
Thank you.
That is the end of our presentation. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Friedman has it.
Actually, it was answered.
Oh, it's answered, okay.
Just make one point, that in the course of this process, the folks at CAMTC have been extremely supportive and collaborative with city staff. The idea is to maintain the level playing field, but to raise that playing field to make sure that we are establishing a level of enforcement that recognizes the positive actors that are out there in the business environment, so.
And I'd like to mention Amos Nettinell, CEO of CMTC.
Yes.
The audience can answer any questions.
I have a card for him to speak. Okay? Sir? I say it, Amos Nettinell.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, city council, Amos Nettinell, CEO of the California Massage Therapy Council.
Two minutes, okay?
Perfect. I'm pleased that CMTC has had the opportunity to work with the city, the city manager, city attorney, the police department. The California Massage Therapy Council was established in 2009 to implement a fair, rigorous, effective statewide massage certification process that would both help protect the public from illegitimate massage providers and streamline the certification process for massage professionals throughout the state. Your mission is our mission. CMTC has always supported the authority of local government to maintain local control of illegal massage establishments. We believe that this ordinance and a recent CMTC legislative proposal will empower the city and remove any ambiguity about the authority of the city to maintain control of such establishments. We look forward to continue working with you and on all efforts to go after the bad apples, but at the same time, protect the citizens' right to have access to the remedial benefits of therapeutic massage in respectful and safe environment. And I'm available to answer any questions or address any concerns, and I bet everyone may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I just wanted to thank the gentleman for coming and expressing your support of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Najarian?
I support the ordinance, but I do have some reservations on this window issue. I know many businesses on-brand, Bank of America has drapes, the Charles Schwab brokerage at 500 North Brand has blinds, the Hollywood Production Center on North Brand has blinds. The optometrist has a rack full of his wares, so I don't want to go too far down this road because I think it's going to be tough enforcing, you know, allowing an optometrist that you can't show those lenses because it violates our thing, or Bank of America, or any other business that would otherwise have sun shining in, can't have blinds or drapes, so I'm just concerned.
Mr. Najarian, if I can respond, I think your point's well-taken, to the extent that there are some issues in terms of applying these equally to similar types of businesses. We'll be looking closely, obviously, at what constitutes a professional services for the purposes of the statute to say these businesses would have to comply and these wouldn't. In addition, we could look at other zoning mechanisms, maybe some on, in some zones would be permitted and then other zones wouldn't be permitted. Those are all things that, as Tim mentioned, this is just the initial concept, and as we get into the weeds on this, we'll definitely take those concerns into consideration.
If I may, without disregarding or making light of the concern expressed by Councilman Najarian, I think the visibility aspect of any regulation that we come up with is essential because of the type of business that we're talking about. And again, we really don't have, we have well-established massage parlors in the city of Glendale, none of them are here objecting to this. I'm sure they're well aware because they will be impacted by this, and they're not here saying, "Don't do this," because, and the reason they're not here is because they have nothing to fear, they have nothing to hide.
It's just to tell staff to go here and commence...
I know, all I'm saying is that I understand the concern, but at the same time, this, you know, it's about the storefront, right? It's not about what happens, there's, there'll be a door beyond which people will be receiving their therapy and such, it's not like we're invading their privacy or anything like that. But a massage parlor should have no reason to just be not visible, be dark, be draped over. I can't think of a reason that they would do that, because all it is is a reception area. Just, that's how I feel about it.
Any more comments? There's an ordinance for introduction.
Yes.
You introduce it?
I'll introduce it.
Okay.
And then, Mr. Mayor, we'd ask that items two and three be held over till next week, but item four be adopted tonight.
Excuse me?
We're asking that items two and three be held over till next week, with the adoption of the ordinance.
Oh, okay.
And then item number four be taken tonight.
Okay, then let's do that. 8C4, is there a motion on that?
No, I'm moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
This is a 8C4?
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Quintero?
Sinanian? Yes.
Mayor Weaver?
Aye. Thank you. Next, please.
Next item, item number 10, is a reports and information, 10A is capital improvement program presentation.
Mr. Ochoa?
Yes, sir, as a practitioner of public administration and municipal governance, this is something that's actually near and dear to my heart, and I know it is to yours too, to make sure that the residents know that we aren't just lighting the lights, but rather, the Department of Public Works is hard at work maintaining our infrastructure, which is in alignment with city council priorities from the adoption of your budget this year. We have a rather brief presentation, yet detailed in many ways, for your edification, for the community's edification, as presented by our deputy director of public works and city engineer, Mr. Rubik Galanian. Rubik?
Mr. Galanian?
Mr. Ochoa, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm very pleased to report today that despite a weak economy and our several fiscal challenges, we are actually managing a very robust capital improvement program. With that, I'd like to take a moment to give credit to our dedicated, high-performing project teams and support staff, who work very hard to maintain a very impressive productivity level. With that, we had a very successful capital improvement program last year in 2013, whereby we managed to complete 14 construction projects with a total valuation of $35.6 million. And these are listed on the slide, some of the noteworthy projects that we have completed are the Brand Library and Art Center renovation project, with currently being furnished and upgraded, and the grand opening is in March of this year. We also completed the Central Avenue and adjacent street infrastructure improvement project with a valuation of almost $11 million, and the Fairmont Park and Wright facility, almost $500,000 with Measure R funding. Similarly, we have 20 projects currently in this fiscal year, in this calendar year, 2014, that are under construction with an approximate valuation of over $37 million. Again, some of the noteworthy projects are Central Park for Seo, Colorado Street Lane Edition, and Parking Lot Number 10, that will be starting in April of 2014. Kenyatta Boulevard and adjacent street infrastructure improvement project, that came before you last Tuesday, over a $10 million joint project with Glendale Water and Power, that will be starting in late February. Glendale Avenue, West Water Capacity and Street Improvement Projects, that we talked about a few minutes ago, and that will be starting in April of 2014 as well. We've only listed 12 of them, in the interest of limiting the number of slides, but there are eight more projects that we are working on, and they're under construction. Moving forward to next year, we are working on the design of several major projects, 15 of which will be completed in 2015 with an approximate valuation of $40.7 million. Again, some of the noteworthy projects I'd like to mention is Central Library Innovation Project, at $15 million. We are finalizing the design and hoping to go out to bid within the next few months. Chevy Chase sewer diversion project, that's a $10 million project. Pennsylvania Avenue, that's a joint project with the county that came before this dais a couple of weeks ago, as well as some other projects, the Riverwalk, Culver Bridge, and Pacific Community Center Wayfinding, as well as Palmer Park renovations. 90 to 95% on a given year of our projects are funded by non-general funds, funding sources, and we'd like to highlight and emphasize our success in spending and accelerating the spending of Measure R funding. To date, as Mr. Zern mentioned earlier, we have spent $4.3 million of Measure R monies that was dedicated to the city of Glendale. As you may recall, this is a half-cent sales tax that was enacted by the voters in 2008. Over a 10-year period, we will be receiving over $35 million worth of Measure R funding. And current projects that are receiving Measure R fundings are San Fernando Grandview Avenue at Great Railroad Crossing, that should be completed by end of February, early of March of this year. Central Avenue received $3.25 million worth of Measure R funding, as well as Sonora Avenue. And we have several other projects that we're utilizing Measure R fundings for. And we have listed three projects in the near future that we will be using Measure R funding, the traffic signal installation at various locations, door-on-street rehabilitation, and construction of citywide bicycle facilities will be going on in the next year or the following year. I mentioned funding sources, this list, some of our funding sources, Measure R, obviously, gas tax, our enterprise fund from Sewer Fund, our tax bond measures that we have used up the last of, the federal STPL grants, park CIP for park development and rehabilitation projects, park development impact fees, TDA, Transportation Development Act funds, what we typically use for bicycle facilities, highway safety improvements program, it's a federal funding, again, and CDBG, as well as Prop 84 funds. With that, in a nutshell, I'll take questions that you may have.
Just a comment, I had, if you're talking about Duran Street east of Brand?
Yes.
I keep forgetting to ask you, when the heck are we going to do that? It has to be one of the bumpiest, rundown streets around town Glendale, now you just showed me.
Mr. Mayor, the plan is to go to construction in 2015.
That'll, because I really bounce around on that road, and a lot of the curb and gutters, all be updated.
Yes.
That'll be a big improvement.
Yes.
Any other comments?
And just because I know the council wouldn't say it for themselves, but I think when you look at all of these projects, when you look at all the resources that are being invested in the community, again, the council sets the priorities when we do the budget in terms of transportation, mobility, and a healthy, solid physical infrastructure. You're seeing that play out now, whether, and you see within these projects, really, the respective agendas and visions of the individual city council members. Mr. Najarian bringing money back from Metro, Mrs. Friedman looking at all of the parks development, bikeway development, Mr. Quintero, the same thing. And of course, with your engineering background, sir, you tie it together with the quality control over Mr. Galanian's team. And certainly, Mr. Sinanian, as he gets more acclimated in his role in looking at how we make a place, as much as anything else, how we dedicate and invest these funds reflect what you want this community to be, and you hear it from your constituents. Folks need to recognize that continuous loop of feedback, investment, and vision, and how it all plays together. Council's much too modest to say it for themselves, so it needed to be said, and I think you ought to be congratulated for maintaining through the worst recession in a century, almost, the maintenance of our physical infrastructure here. Glendale truly is a leader among cities.
You know, it's so easy, Mr. Ochoa, in the course of a year, to forget everything that is being done. I mean, you run the list, and I say, "God, we did all that this year?" I mean, you lose track of it.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss if I don't mention that all of these... Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss if I don't mention that all of these projects have been completed within budget and on time.
Now, that's a good additional comment. You know, it is something, something that very few other cities can state that they do. We make a big investment in our city for the residents that live here, who pay a premium price to live in Glendale. Okay, if there's another comment, there's no motion or anything, it's just for information. Very great work, Mr. Zern, Mr. Galanian, and your staffs. Okay, what's next, please?
Next item is Oral Communications. This is a five-minute portion. Discussion is limited to items. Not a part of this agenda each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker. There'll be no debate or decision. Assuming manager me or further matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Speaker Harry Zavos.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos. Last week, I addressed the situation of Wildom's work product error that resulted in an $8 million shortfall of anticipated needed revenue from the recently passed water rate ordinance. That error has led to a reassessment of Wildom's cost-of-service analysis, Wildom's COSA, upon which the ordinance is based, and which, if it has flaws, would render an ordinance based on it violative of Prop 218 constitutional requirements. That reassessment has caused the city to scrap Wildom's work product and begin anew. A work product that I understand cost the city over $100,000. I pointed out that prior to the ordinance's adoption, I, as well as a law firm that specializes in this area of the law, submitted written analyses identifying several Prop 218 errors in Wildom's work. I did so to make the argument that public policy would be best served if the city were more receptive to and respectful of public critiques of its proposals and actions. The $8 million shortfall resulted from a computational error whereby Wildom used bimonthly data in its COSA as if it were monthly data. The only other area, error the city has publicly acknowledged, is that Wildom, in its computation, neglected to input its COSA with some private fireline data. It would appear that both these computational errors can be corrected without abandoning Wildom's COSA. Just input the correct data, rerun the numbers, and adjust the ordinance accordingly. At first, that's what the staff thought could be done. In its December 17, 2013 report, it stated that initially it believed the matter, quote, "could be corrected via a revision of the water rate ordinance adopted in 2012." So why scrap Wildom's COSA and begin anew? The report states that a staff, along with G W P's new consultants, has conducted a detailed analysis of Wildom's work, and I quote, "A number of errors have been identified in calculations and methodology, resulting in the need to perform an entirely new COSA to ensure proper administration of water fees in compliance with Prop 218," end of quote. After I finished speaking, there were remarks from the dius that one could interpret as suggesting none of the errors identified in the detailed analysis were errors that I had identified. It's true, I did not identify the error causing the $8 million shortfall. I didn't have the data that would enable me to do so. But certainly, that error wasn't enough to require jettison Wildom's entire COSA and starting over again. Now, the city tonight can remove any ambiguity and make an unequivocal statement that none of the errors revealed in the detailed analysis include those that I identify. But I believe I should have the right to see what those errors are for myself. I'm making that request tonight. Finally, I'm requesting an opportunity to review and comment on the new COSA before it's formally presented. Should the city contact me and honor this request, I pledge not to publicly reveal the COSA contents before its formal presentation. And if, as a result of my input, changes are made in that COSA, I will not take public credit for them. My goal is not to get credit on this matter or play gotcha. My goal is to ensure that the city's water rate ordinance complies with Prop 218's constitutional requirements.
Next speaker, Mike Brenner.
Brewster.
Oh, that's a W, Brewster, sorry.
Mayor and City Council, thanks for hearing me. My name is Mike Brewster, and I reside at 3342 Mills Avenue in Lockers Center in the area of Glendale. I'm here today to talk about the unfair enforcement of vehicle code 1036-130 has been applied to me. I have lived at my current address since 1972. Since then, I have had a motorhome parked in a space, most of the time in front of my house, which is like a separate driveway. I have never had a parking violation for more than 40 years until last September. The parking violation stated that someone in the neighborhood had complained about my vehicle being parked there. Almost all of my neighbors have lived there a long time. In fact, neighbors on either side of me and six households directly across the street from me, who would mostly be affected, signed a statement saying that they didn't care if I parked in that spot. I have read the ordinance, 1036-130, and it doesn't look like it applies to me because I'm not parked in the street. My motorhome is parked at right angles to the street. There is room for another vehicle to park parallel to the street without impairing traffic. I drove around my neighborhood, and within a half a mile, I photographed about 20 RVs the same way mine had was, and the only difference is that no one had complained, and they are still there. Why should a passerby who may or may not have a house or a neighborhood, in the neighborhood, in any standing in the neighborhood, be able to escalate a violation and the city selectively chooses to enforce it? Selective enforcement and any anonymous complaint should not happen in Glendale. Why am I being singled out? How can the most effective neighbors not care about the situation? And one passerby called to complain. What I'd like from the mayor and the city council to consider is to issue a variance for my neighborhood and to keep my boat, keep their boats, RVs, and trailers to be able to park as long as they're not in the street taking up public parking or blocking traffic or creating any safety issue. I have photographs, if you'd like to see them.
You can give them the city clerk. Are you finished?
Yes.
I want to ask, is staff familiar at all with this case? No? Staff would investigate or look at it.
Okay.
If we could have you leave your phone number, and somebody will get back to you.
Okay.
Personally, I hate when you have a neighbor or any kind of person that wants to get even with their neighbor and then turns them in.
Can I do this thing again?
Yes, leave it. Staff will look at them all. Council can't do anything here tonight.
Just put that number to contact you.
Yeah, just put your phone number on the card. Staff will check in it, you'll hear from them.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. I have no more cards.
I have my card, Mr. Mayor.
Where's his card?
Oh, I didn't need to keep.
Oh, you didn't turn in a card for that. You had it for announcements. I saw you standing here during the three-minute period. Now, where is your card for oral communication?
You want to say that you can use that?
We're not going to wait. Turn it in afterwards. Mr. Moheil will come up and use your five minutes. Next time, turn in a card for oral communication.
You can use it.
Well, yes, you do. Everybody does.
Good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members.
I was getting another five minutes. I'm so generous tonight.
I would like to announce again tonight that Glendale residents have an opportunity to repeal the 7% utilities users tax, which is located on one's G W P utility bill and natural gas bill. Today, a petition is circulating throughout our city in which the public has a chance to regain control of their local government from the politicians. Enough is enough in taxes and in fees. While struggling families and businesses are coping with today's economy, our politicians lack fiscal responsibility. From 2001 through 2012, the Glendale population actually declined by 4.5%. During the same period, the city budget increased by a staggering 62%, rising from $438 million to over $700 million. Even with this unprecedented increase in the city's budget, the city council is currently proposing further increases in the city's utility taxes as well as other taxes. Because our city leaders are either unable or unwilling to control spending and manage resources, the people must take direct action to ensure they do so. Reducing city revenue will force our leaders to become more competent, rather than always seeking new ways to tax the public. The utility tax reduction is only 4% of the city's budget. If our leaders cannot manage a 4% reduction in revenue, then we, the people, must take As usual, our politicians will use scare tactics against the uninformed public when claiming they need the money. The collection of signatures neither supports nor opposes the utilities users tax initiative. It simply places the initiative on the ballot and allows the voters to decide their future. Please, please, sign the utilities users tax initiative. In northwest Glendale, Kenneth Village, at Jerry Army Realtor, that merchant has the petition. Anybody northwest wants to sign, they can go there. Also, there will be petitioners throughout the city asking for the resident to sign the petition so that this initiative can be put on the ballot someday near in the future. Again, please participate. This does not say you approve it or disapprove it. You just want to have the community have the right to decide themselves if they want to be taxed again and again and again. Thank you. My name is Mike Moheil.
Mr. City Clerk, I seem to recall if you're doing a petition or something, it has to be done a certain format, be approved through the city clerk, is it, or am I just not remembering?
It does.
There's a process?
There is a process.
And that's been done?
Probably so far. I would actually defer to the city attorney. We're in discussions over some of the issues in regards to it.
I'm trying to recall, there was an issue.
They, I can tell you that we were furnished with a notice of the publication of their intent to circulate this petition, which is one of the steps that they have to do, as well as that was filed with the city clerk.
The initial notice of intent was filed, and we had informed you in September, and then our office was required at that point to prepare a ballot title and summary, which we did, and then...
Okay, so it's all been done?
To some extent.
That's all? Okay, thank you. What's next, please?
There's no new business. Pushing to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Stand adjourned at 7:48.